I call this meeting to order. This is a regular meeting of the Northfield Public School Board. Today is Monday, April 23rd, 2018, and the time is 7:00 PM. Dr. Hillman, there was a few items in the table file.
Yes, this evening we had some additional appointments. We have increase and decrease and changes in assignment, leave of absence requests, and two resignations.
Okay, thank you very much. Well, if there are no objections, we'll add these items to the agenda as we move forward. We now have an opportunity for public comment. This is a chance for anyone residing in the Northfield Public School District to address the board. Is there anyone here who wishes to address the board? Okay, I see no one coming forward. Board members, previously at this point in the meeting, we would have moved to approve the minutes, but tonight we will begin by including the minutes as part of the consent agenda. So as you'll note, the minutes from the meeting of Monday, April 9th, are part of tonight's consent agenda. And also, we have made an additional change in that in the order of the agenda, the approval of the consent agenda will precede the items for individual actions. So just wanted to make those noted changes on the agenda so everyone saw that. We will then now move on to announcements and recognition. Dr. Hillman?
Yes, and I have about three this evening, and just wanted to mention that the Northfield High School Choir had an opportunity to perform along with the Iowa City West Choirs at the Basilica of St. Mary last Saturday. It was the ending, the capstone experience for Iowa City West, who is doing kind of a tour of Minnesota there, tour included Luther and Farmington High School and with Rosemont High School, some joint performances. And they got to finish with Northfield at the Basilica of St. Mary's with quite a good turnout from Northfield there. It was just a wonderful evening in a very special vocal space. Congratulations to Kyle Eastman and the rest of the choir for a great performance over the weekend at one of the better places to perform in the state. We also want to talk about the Minnesota State Knowledge Bowl Meet. It's an annual two-day academic quiz competition that's sponsored by the Minnesota Service Coalition. The high school was one of, NHS was one of three out of 50 schools that had more than one team compete at the state meet this year. The Northfield Steel Team finished 12th of 25, and the Northfield Chrome Team finished 18th of 25 in Class AA. Northfield Steel won the Heritage Spirit Award, which is given to the team that determined by the judges throughout the two-day competition best exemplifies school spirit, camaraderie, team cohesiveness, and positive competitive spirit. And in general, the judges said they were the coolest and the nicest, which I'm sure is the most important to that team. So congratulations to our Knowledge Bowl teams. And I'm happy that she's here this evening because we want to congratulate Emily Rhodes, Northfield High School Mayor, for receiving a very prestigious scholarship. She has received the Congress Bundestag Youth Exchange Scholarship to study in Germany for 2018-19. And this program is jointly funded and administered by the governments of the United States and Germany. The Congress Bundestag Youth Exchange provides a year-long academic home, state, and community service opportunity for American and German high school students. The program is designed to strengthen ties between youth, improve their career skills through formal study and work experience, and expand their perspectives and awareness of each other's culture, society, history, and politics. This is a very prestigious honor. We've had a few students in the past who have taken advantage of it as well, but we'd like to congratulate Emily. We're so proud of you, and thanks for being a good representative of us next year in Germany. So congratulations.
And just so Emily, or just so everyone knows, Emily is also part of the District Youth Council, who comes and watches school board meetings. So we appreciate you being here tonight, and it couldn't have been more timely.
Thank you.
So is there anything any board members would like to add? Okay. We will now move on to items for discussion and report. We have on hand, ready to be, or ready to present, the annual Thought Exchange. Kaylee Metcalf, who's a service team lead from Thought Exchange, will join us via conference to share the results of the Discover Step of the 2018 Continue the Conversation Thought Exchange engagement process. And just, board members, reminder that there was some additional information that was included in the table file as we pursued the discussion. So welcome, Kaylee.
We're ready to go. There she is.
Hello, hello. Thank you so much for having me this evening. As mentioned, my name is Kaylee, and I'm a service team lead with Thought Exchange, and I help facilitate conversations like this one. In fact, in fall 2016, I was a part of that exchange as well, and so happy to be back and excited to walk through these results with you. I will turn off my video, and I'll be sharing my screen today. And so I'll just get that set up quickly, and we'll begin to go. Is that looking okay?
It is.
Wonderful. Okay. So we'll start off this evening with a really quick project overview, and we're going to spend most of our time looking at the results today, so opening up some tools and talking about the conversations that were prevalent in this exchange. And then we'll give a bit of time at the end for questions as well. So to start our overview, we opened participation on February 22nd, 2018, this year, and it closed on March 25th, 2018. We had eight separate Thought Exchange processes. This was for schools, a group, or a conversation for divisions staffed in the community. And in these conversations, we saw parents and guardians participate, those who identified as both a parent guardian and a staff member, those who identified only as staff members, and then, of course, community members as well. Just a quick overview for those of you who are less familiar with the Thought Exchange process, there are three steps in a Thought Exchange. So first, we ask participants to share their thoughts in response to three open-ended questions. And we take a little break, and then we actually go out for another 10 days after the share step. We ask participants to consider the ideas of others, and they get to add stars and prioritize between the thoughts to show which ones resonate the most with them. And now we're in the Discover Step. So this is where we're able to discover what's important to participants. We'll be looking mostly at the district level tonight, and it's also where we share the results back out with participants as well. As I mentioned, we asked three questions, and these were the ones we put out there. Now, this is similar to the last two large district exchanges we've done, which is really great because we're going to be able to look at some comparisons across the years. Particularly tonight, we'll look at Fall 2016 and Winter 2018. But we asked, what are some concerns you have about our school this year? What are some things you appreciate about our school this year? And what questions do you have about our school or district? In terms of participation, we saw 934 people participate this year, so that's unique participants, meaning that they shared a thought, starred at least one thought, or did both. Participants contributed 1,828 thoughts and just over 64,000 stars. And so when you think about that star number, what that really represents is how much your participants are reflecting on the ideas of others and prioritizing those ideas. And to give you a sense of how this compares to other years, in 2016, we saw just shy of 800 people take part. And then in 2015, the first time that you ran an exchange with us, we had just over 1,100 participants. So this year, landing, you know, just in between. If we break that down, 73% of participants this year were identified as parent or guardian. 13% were staff members, so 123 people. We had a group that identified as, you know, both parent guardian and a staff member, similar numbers to those that identified as staff members. And then a small group of community members took part, so we had 11 participants who we had to provide as community members. So now I want to jump in and show you the results themselves, and to frame that, I want to talk about our Discover objectives. And so these are the types of things that we are to look into, and this is what we'll be going over today. So looking at, you know, following our questions, what are those unique areas of appreciation and concern that rise to the top in this conversation? What are the top things that participants are asking questions about, so we can identify where we can communicate more? And how do conversations change between Fall 2016 and Winter 2018? So we'll look at some of the shifts there. And then throughout the conversation today, we'll be talking, or I'll be pointing out any notable demographic differences or differences between schools and how they're prioritizing feedback. So what I'll do is I'll jump over into a tool that we call our interactive bar charts. And what we're looking at now is a view of conversation sizes. And so these are actually the, you know, really large summary themes, we call them, that actually have smaller, more granular themes grouped into them. So we're able to see, you know, what's coming up on this level, and then what are those bigger buckets that those are grouped into. And so if you have access to this after this call, this is the view that you will open up to on the computer. For ease of access, I'm going to jump in and actually look first at the appreciation question itself. So we asked participants, what are some things you appreciate about our school this year? We'll go over those top areas. And while it's a little bit small, I will be reading out the names here so that everybody can understand what I'm talking about. So if you can see that top bar there, teachers and staff, that was the largest area of appreciation that we saw in this exchange this year. I can click on the bar and see some of the thoughts. If you're able to view those, that's great. If not, I'll give you a quick overview. Really what we're seeing here is participants appreciating the passion, the care, and the hard work, dedication, and investment that teachers make in students and in learning. Again, lots of thoughts here, you can see as I'm scrolling through. This was the largest conversation in the exchange overall. You can see it actually is over twice the size of the next conversation there. The next one, though, still very much appreciated, is a medium-sized conversation around school environment. And in this theme, we see participants expressing that they believe their schools are welcoming, diverse, and there is a conversation here around inclusivity as well. One demographic point to note here is we're seeing a lot of, or we're seeing this as a priority, specifically at Greenville Park Elementary. So that's a prominent conversation at that school. This theme also grew compared to last year, so that was another thing that my team picked out about this theme. This third theme under the appreciation question is around curriculum and programs. And here, we also see participants saying that they're thankful for the diversity of programming available, in particularly, participants are expressing appreciation for arts, music, advanced classes, physical education. And there are also some comments about the web program, which I haven't heard before, so you can see a few thoughts around that as well. This one here, if I can point it out, is, I think it's a great program, not only for sixth graders, but also for the eighth grade web readers. So a diversity of thought here, and that's really what participants are saying, is a lot of variety of courses, and they value that. Following closely along actually is extracurricular, and so similarly here, we see participants saying that they appreciate the amount of activities or the variety of opportunities that students are able to enroll in or take advantage of. If we look at, jump over and look at the concerns that participants were expressing this year, I've, just so you know, I've taken out some of the themes because there were more in this question. And so there are a lot of smaller themes underneath the bottom here, but we're just looking at the top themes right now. And the top theme that came up here was around safety and supervision. So this theme really grew this year compared to 2016. And what we're seeing in this conversation is some disappointment that the bond didn't pass in the fall. And this is connected to a desire to still focus on school security and actually to increase school security. There is conversation around entrances, the way that school campuses are laid out, as well as the types of drills or systems that could support in monitoring who enters schools and the overall security of schools. Again, this was the largest conversation in question one. It was also a medium-sized conversation in question three, where we asked participants for their questions. So we'll jump over and look at that in a little bit, too. But this is something that was particularly prioritized, and you can see under a lot of the thoughts here, you're seeing Bridgewater Elementary, a large conversation at Bridgewater, and also at Greenville Park. And when we look at how it was prioritized across other demographic groups, we saw parents and guardians as those kind of separate demographic groups prioritizing these, assigning a lot of stars to these groups, but in a very similar way. There's some consistency there. The second theme that we're seeing in terms of concerns among participants is around class size. So participants are expressing a concern that large class sizes, a lot of numbers actually in these thoughts here, talking about 30, 30-plus, that type of characterization of classes. And then talking about how that size may impact the ability of the schools and of teachers to meet the individual learning needs of students. Interestingly, this was a smaller conversation, oh, sorry, yeah, it was a smaller conversation in 20, sorry, it was a larger conversation in 2016 than it was this year, but as you can see, it is still prominent. It's also something that comes up in that question three, where we ask participants for their questions. The last thing that I'll mention about this theme, and which is also similar for this next theme about technology, is that participants who express concern or assigned a lot of stars to these themes, that actually correlated with those that indicated in our satisfaction question, which we asked all participants, you know, how satisfied are you with Northfield Public Schools? So there was a correlation between that and those who are concerned about class size and about technology. So I'll leave that with you to interpret as you will. As I mentioned, technology also comes up. This was of particular concern at Northfield Middle School, and again, for those who rated their satisfaction as lower, participants in this theme are sharing concerns and wondering if technology and iPads are being used in the most beneficial ways at school and in classrooms. I mean, there does seem to be concern with how much high students are spending in front of screens, and particularly on iPads. Something that comes up. We do see some other medium-sized themes. I'll just read them out for you. Facilities and infrastructure, that's one that we'll see when we jump over to the third question. School capacity and student discipline and character development. So medium-sized themes here, smaller than those three we just spoke about. When we jump over to that question three, just see if I can make this a little bit bigger for you. It may still be difficult to see, and I do apologize for that, but the largest theme overall, we see around planning and development. And in this question, where we ask participants, you know, what questions do you have about our school and district, they're really asking about next steps. So in this planning and development theme, particularly both short-term and long-term plans and next steps for the district's infrastructure. So it connects a lot to that facilities and infrastructure theme right below it. And in terms of planning, a lot of thoughts actually reference Greenville Park, the high school, and just improvements in general for schools. Some questions are actually asked directly about what the referendum process will look like moving forward as well. So a lot of, you know, opportunity to see where you could communicate about these types of plans. Facilities and infrastructure follows that as a large theme in question three. Again, participants asking questions about plans, they're asking about how the physical conditions and space of school buildings can be addressed, and again, talk about the referendum as well, although these are more specific, less to long-term planning, but more to the schools themselves. You'll see a lot of thoughts in here. And in what you can see is a pattern, we see the next themes around technology and class size. So what we see in this conversation and in this exchange is that a lot of the questions are echoing our concerns question. Technology, similar to what we saw in question one, although there were some more thoughts around, you know, is it being assessed how this affects our students? Can iPads be used less? So framed in that way. And there are some thoughts as well around what implementation and instruction for technology will look like in the future. Again, we see this as a prominent conversation, more so in Northfield Middle School than in other schools. What I'll jump over to now is where we can look at the year-on-year analysis or comparison. And again, a bit of a small screen for you, and I do apologize for that. I will make sure that I'm explaining this clearly so that we can see what I'm referring to. So right now, we're actually looking within that concerns question, so we can think, you know, what actually became more of a concern in 2018? And we do see the safety and supervision right here. The blue on the left is 2016, the green on the right is 2018, and we see that this theme just became quite a lot larger. It received 18.4% of stars in the concerns question. Last year, it was, you know, just under 3% of the stars assigned within concerns. This also grew substantially in that question three, as I mentioned. Technology, again, we see it there. Facilities and infrastructure, too, did grow a little bit, and it seems, you know, following what happened in the fall with your bond outcome, it is top of mind for participants. We also see one that we haven't talked about, student support and engagement. This one grew just a little bit. And then we also see some kind of new themes arising, well, actually, I don't know that they're all new, this is just within the concerns question, sorry, but professional development, experiential and vocational learning, community involvement, so some other themes that are popping up, they are quite small, though. When we look at what comes up in terms of questions, as I mentioned again, we see planning and development, that's the one that sticks out the most. Again, technology and safety and supervision. We also see some questions coming up again around professional development, and then advanced learning opportunities is something that comes up as well. Academic calendar, so this is a great tool, especially just for mapping onto the previous year and saying, you know, what maybe grew in terms of attention? What I'd love to end on before opening it up for any questions is where we see some areas of improvement. So there's kind of two ways to look at this, and first is in that appreciation question. We can see that last year, teachers and staff was a large conversation. It actually grew this year, though, so still a focus and slightly more prioritized this year. School environment, another theme we already spoke about, is one that also grew, curriculum and programs, and extracurricular, those as well, communication even grew just by a little tiny bit. And we see instruction and program delivery as well. We can also think of it in terms of what became less of a concern. So now I'm looking within that concerns question, and as I mentioned, class size, smaller conversation than last year. Hire and retain quality staff, that was not as big of a conversation as last year. Lunch and recess, parking and traffic, funding and budget, and so we do see some changes in that way. One insight that the team picked out for me was around, there was this 2016 concern within here around, you know, having sufficient and equitable funds for schools. Participants were wanting to know what was in place to ensure opportunities were available for all students, and within that, there was something around family income. And in 2018, we do see a smaller conversation around this, and really, that conversation around family income has disappeared, and that was something that they had picked out as interesting. But really, we are seeing in those other areas, like I mentioned, class size, you know, lunch and recess, hire and retain quality staff, less concern than before. And so I know that's a lot of information at the district level view, but it's great to see, you know, what's coming up and how it compares to last year, and I hope that's helpful for your work moving forward. And what I'll do now, I'll stop sharing my screen, and I'll bring myself back up then, and then ask if there's any questions or anything that piques your interest in particular that has come up to me.
Great, thanks, Kaylee. Board members' questions. Amy?
Hi, Kaylee. I'm Amy Gerwitz, and I have a question, you know, I believe, I agree that safety and security is a big issue, but we timed the Thought Exchange in such a way that it ended up being right after the Parkland High School shooting. So I'm wondering if you have done other high schools or other school districts recently as well, and if you're seeing the same change or increase in concern about safety and security as you saw with us, and so if it's, you know, if you can somehow, if there's any way of calling it the Parkland Effect, or whether our safety and security issue actually is stronger than maybe what you've seen in other school districts, the increase or the change?
Yeah, great question. Thanks so much. I would say absolutely. I've seen that in a trend in my work. My entire team has seen that this spring, actually, is there's a really large conversation around safety, security, safety of schools, all of that right now. And exchanges really are often a snapshot in time, particularly when we're asking, you know, these broad-based questions around concerns and appreciation. It does tend to capture, you know, what's going on more broadly in society. So definitely, I would say that you're not unique in that case. Northfield is not unique.
So do you have a sense of, then, I mean, I'm trying to figure out what the Parkland Effect might be, and whether people are actually, once Parkland recedes into our past, and maybe it won't ever, would we be back at the same level that we were two years ago as far as safety and concern, or is this now a permanent? And I know you probably can't answer this question, but I was just curious about it.
You know, I don't know if I can, but for me, what I love about seeing districts like yours engage, you know, almost, it has been every year, this year we had about a year and a couple months in between engagements, but we can actually kind of map what's happening across the years and see where there are differences and similarities. And so I think the only way really to find out would be next time, you know, what is the size of that conversation? How long is that conversation lasting, if we call it something like the Parkland Effect? How long is that conversation lasting, if we call it something like the Parkland Effect? I'll let you know in six months when I have more insight.
Great. And then I guess all of the responses were somehow tallied into your summary responses. There were no culling of any responses or anything like that. I'm just checking.
Yeah, so it depends what you mean by culling. What, what I would say is, we do have a team of moderators when the exchange is actually happening, and they flag out any thoughts that are, you know, rude or hurtful to a person or a group of people. So those aren't actually seen by participants in the star step, and that's a very small subset of thoughts with most exchanges. When we're looking at the district level results, which is what we did today, we are also looking at a far larger subset of thoughts, but there are some thoughts that were not grouped into these, because you can imagine there are thousands of thoughts. And so our team doesn't group everything, but we group it up so that we're able to have, you know, a good picture of what those conversations sizes are.
And Kaylee, I'll just mention here too that, so after, as the share step is going on, for the past couple of years, Erin Bailey and I have been the school district people on to review the moderators, what they call flagged thoughts. And if you think that there were 1,800 thoughts contributed, we reviewed less than 70. And one of the things I just think it's important to know is that when we work with Thought Exchange, they have a range of moderation criteria, and we have always used what's considered to be the most transparent. So that means we include more thoughts than most of the other districts. And we've actually joked that many of the thoughts that end up in our, in our star step would never make it into lots of other districts' experiences, right, Kaylee?
Yeah, we do have a range, absolutely. Some districts are more on that protective side, and we have moderated in Northfield in a very transparent way.
And so we're the least protective, I think, is because what we really think we need is that we need to make sure that we get to see everything we can, warts and all. And we think that's important. The only piece, place where we go is when some, when you can identify a specific person in a comment, or if it's rude or hurtful, you can identify a student. But really, I mean, Erin can speak to this too, the, even the 70 thoughts that were flagged, I think we probably only said, you know, it was maybe half, you know, that we had said, yes, we agree that would identify someone specifically. And that was both, frankly, I'll tell you, we actually filtered out more good comments, you know, more appreciations than concerns this year in terms of, because people might call a specific person out for something that they did well, and because that matches the criteria that you could identify, if we're going to take the ones that you have concerns out, we also have to take the ones out of our appreciation. So we feel pretty good that you're getting a pretty transparent view of what was shared.
And I think it's just important to note that you are circling back on those two.
Absolutely.
The positive and the negative still get shared, just aren't put out for public.
So I have one more question. So I can see how maybe 100 or more people made comments about safety and security, but I'm wondering if on the opposite end of the scale, there might have been one or two people who commented on a topic that got a lot of stars, but because there was only one or two comments, they wouldn't end up accruing as many stars as 100, the topic that 100 people commented on. Does that make sense? That they should have jumped up somehow? Because they, they pinpointed something that maybe people resonated with, but because there was only one comment about it, it didn't get the volume of the other larger comments.
Yeah, that's definitely right. I mean, when there are more thoughts, as you can imagine, when we view them in the star step, there is more likelihood that that topic will be seen. We do have some ways of kind of minimizing that or allowing those more, I don't know what the right word is, but less typical, let's say, thoughts to be seen. We have something called the diversity algorithm that our software runs before the star step, and it's making sure that the thoughts that participants see are as diverse as possible. We also make sure that thoughts are seen an equal number of times. So those two things work in the background. Another really great way to explore those types of topics is actually, and I'll, I can, I'll send it to Matt, Dr. Holman, but there's a way of actually looking at a list of thoughts in terms of a passion score. And so what that means is that in turn, instead of even total number of stars that a thought might have received and then jumping to the top of the list, you can still see, you know, say there are only 10 people who assign stars to that thought, you can see how passionate they were. So what if, you know, 10 people assign five stars? Well, that actually means something, right? And so there are some other ways to look at the data. Today, we are, again, we're looking at the content by starring, and so it does reflect, you know, if more thoughts were shared on that topic, yes.
Thank you.
Does that make sense?
Yes, I'm just, and I think my internal answer is that it's important to read through all the comments anyway, because there might be some hidden gems in there that just don't rise to the top because, you know, because even the passion scale, if you're going through and there's, you know, you have to give stars to six different comments, and you're passionate about two or three of them, you're still dividing up your stars. So, but if there's only one comment that you care about, then you're going to give five or six, you know, stars to that. So, so I understand it's an approach, but I'm not sure how much it actually really captures passion when passion has to be divided, you know.
Right, in terms of prioritization.
Well, and I do think that you're right, Amy. And at the same time, I think that's one of the, one of the goals that we have with, and why I really appreciate this kind of feedback, is when you end up, I like to think of the star step as a little bit of a forced choice analysis. You know, I look at these thoughts that come to me, and I have to make some decisions about what are the things that are the most important to me? Because actionable data, which is what we hope to get out of Thought Exchange, helps bubble to the top, you know, the things that most people, you know, have, that most people appreciate, or the things that most people have concerns about. And so you're right, there are some hidden gems, and I think what will be, would be interesting is if we went back a couple of years and we looked at some of those previous reports, something that hidden gem, and how much that grew. And that's where I like the, the analysis between years, because you see something that may not have gotten, you know, as much traction a couple of years ago that now does, and is there a way to be predictive of is, what's the, what's the current gem that might be the big topic the next time? And I suppose if we could figure out Thought Exchange would hire all of us, and we'd be helping with that. But I think that that's the, any survey tool that you have has its strengths and has its weaknesses. And I think the strength of this particular tool in its current format is the fact that it does help bubble to the top. What are the things that people are most, most concerned about or most appreciate? And it actually gives us some usable information to say, oh, yes, we, when we triangulate that with things that we hear from parents or from the community, and we also heard about it in Thought Exchange, it gives us a couple of touch points to say, we've got some pretty good data behind, you know, making a decision, or at least having a conversation, because this is not a randomized, you know, stratified sample survey. It's, it's something a little bit different, but it's intended to get the conversation going. So I think that that's the strength, but you're right, there could be some hidden pieces in there that don't get as much emphasis for whatever reason at the time. And I do like that people have to make a choice between some things, because it tells us where they really prioritize.
Excellent. Great question, Amy. Other questions board members have? Ellen.
So my, my question is less to do with the process and the results, and more to do with how this will inform our work. So I was really struck at the top box scores and how, numera, which way you seem to slice and dice it. They might jostle as to what was the very top one, but they, they were pretty consistent across groups. And we clearly have the facilities action team in process, or I'm not sure what we're calling it, facilities committee. But some of the other pieces, just thinking about, we, you know, how we want to use this data going forward, because there is, I guess I was really struck by, in 2016, that seemed like there was more dispersment and that we had some more sort of consistency in the top box and how pronounced they were.
Well, I, I think like anytime that we have looked at this data in the past, one of the reasons that we have Thought Exchange come and share their analysis of it, and all board members get the username and password, you know, for the very detailed report section. And then this week, Kaylee will also give me the public-facing URL that we will share with parents, you know. So I think there's a couple of different ways, I think, for people to want to dig into the data from the outside, they have a chance to dig into that data and offer us their thoughts and analysis of it if they were to sew shoes. And as board members, I think many times at this table, when we've been considering something, you have referenced the Thought Exchange processes that we've had to help inform decision-making. And I think that that's the key thing, is it's, you know, this is different than any other survey tool that we use, because it's not a vote, if you will. It is a, it is a bubbling to the top. And so how I expect that we keep using is, we take a look at what we have, you know, in the process. We cross-reference that with our strategic plan. We look at our strategic plan, say, are we getting feedback? I have to tell you, I'm pleased that class size has reduced a little bit this year, because we did put some more investment in that this past year. If we go by that, next year, we should even have less concern, because we're getting increased the contingency. And if you think about it, some of the decisions that we've made, going back to August of 2016, when we added a fifth grade section in August, when we allowed for additional FTE for the middle school second half of the year, and for the high school the second half of the year in the 2016-17 school year, when we think about increasing the contingency fund that allows us to address specific class sizes by a third for next year, there's a clear connection between the strategic plan, the information we got from Thought Exchange, and an action that you took. And so as with anything else, we'll use this as a conversational tool and backup data to take a look at what it says about the strategic plan. Are there areas where we're making traction? There obviously clearly are. And then looking at how can we use that to help give you the data that you need to make the best decisions supporting the strategic plan as we move forward.
Yes, so I just had one more comment on that. So I guess I was focused on the top box, which might have sounded like the areas of concern, but there's also that overwhelming area of appreciation for teachers and staff. And whatever we can do to, like, I'm glad that there's going to be a public piece, that that's one of the next steps, but making sure that teachers and staff see how highly valued they are, I think is important.
And here's the piece that is so wonderful about that, is that it's year over year. And so what is, what I think should be very reassuring to you as a board, and very reassuring to parents and the public, is that people don't dislike, they love our people. And when we have that going for us, when we have a staff, right, that people know, respect, and appreciate, which they clearly are for three years in a row, all of the other things that we're working on can be handled, right? There are modifications you can make to curriculum. There are issues with technology that you can look at and address and discuss. You can't fix it if you have, if people aren't satisfied with your people. That's a much harder nut to crack. And so I think this goes to number one, the staff, who do an excellent job with our students every day, who communicate with parents, who make parents feel and understand that their child is very important to us. I think it also goes to our principals for talking about how well they hire, right? Because it's the most important job that our supervisors do, are hire real high-quality people. And then I think it also goes to how we have worked, I think, very well with our various collective bargaining units over the years to make sure that we are providing a regionally competitive salary package that keeps and retains those people. So I think all of those things coming together, and, you know, of course, we will, you know, we will always go into problem-solving mode, and I really appreciate you saying, we just need to take the stop, we need to celebrate that, the fact that we have outstanding people, which we couldn't do this without. And so this will of course be sent out like we always have, and we will, we will most likely be included in this week's staff newsletter. And it's, it's wonderful, because that's exactly what we want. If we have good people, we can solve all the other problems. It's hard to solve the problem when you don't have good people or people that the community has faith in.
If I may also add a couple of things that, that we could offer. We've started doing something since the fall, which are build-out staff appreciation reports. So if that's something of interest, it's normally about a two-page PDF shareable document that could have a quote included as well, either, you know, from superintendent or from the Board of Education, and just to share some thoughts back with the community in a nice format. So that's always an option that you can let me know if you're interested in.
Will take it.
Yeah, the other one is, these are really great results, and we also find that doing staff engagements as well, sometimes we'll just engage with a subset of the community around a topic of interest, and that can also be a really nice way to follow up and celebrate or identify the issues as well. So just to throw that in there in case we can support in any other ways.
Great. Other questions board members have?
I had just a couple of questions. Kaylee, I noticed when I was looking at our trend in terms of participation when we have done Thought Exchange. So when we did the Thought Exchange around just the facilities conversation, and it was, you know, nearly half what we have seen when it's general topics, when you have researched and used that for other districts, have you found that to be the case? Or was that just sort of a one-off for us in that we saw a significant less participation when we were talking about a specific topic?
Yeah, that's a great question. It really depends. Often, we do see fewer participants for an issues-based process, particularly if it's more complicated or there's more to digest, as participants are kind of framing, you know, framing that for themselves or reading the framing material and then engaging. Sometimes when it's a really hot topic in a district and it's issues-based, we see a little bit more, but generally, yes, that is the trend, we see a bit fewer.
Great. And then I just wanted to dovetail on Ellen's comment about informing our work. And I think as a board, we see district results, but yet we know when we're looking at test data or anything else, you know, we have to disaggregate, you know, the information and see where, around some of the, you know, the issues where there's particular, you know, spots there that, you know, it bubbles up to the district level, but when you look at the subsets where there's some of the, the issues there.
Yeah, I think that when you look at, we have had that, you know, nearly every year, when one thought has risen to the top across the district. When you look under the hood, you know, you find that it was actually a much more substantial conversation in one or two buildings. You know, Kaylee pointed out, you know, the technology issue that bubbled to the top, and this year's, you know, a lot, large majority of the focus is at the middle school. And so what that does is, Kaylee met with all of our administrators virtually about a week ago, and so she went through all, very similar, a report that, which she did with you tonight. And then each building principal now also has their individual reports. So they are digging that one layer beneath about how did Thought Exchange affect their building? And so as you may or may not know, in the past, building principals have used that as an opportunity to help clarify something or engage additional groups around a topic. The questions question, as we like to call it, is my favorite, because those are things where we're really hearing what, you know, parents have on their mind. And so building principals will often address some of those questions in their weekly newsletters that they send home at the middle school. For example, you know, Mr. Jones, if every Sunday morning at 8:00 a.m. you get the newsletter from the middle school, and I can guarantee you, in the next couple of weeks, he'll start to see, he will say, here's one of the questions that we got in Thought Exchange, you know, here's the answer. We've got a lot of positive feedback on that. But I think you're very right, Julie, that we have to make sure that we are, of course, looking across the district, but we also have to come back and take a look under the hood. The positive about our staff, that's across all buildings, right? But the, and we're dealing with different environments, and so there are going to be some different results per building, and that's why our building principals and other administrators are taking that deeper look at it and trying to make additional meaning for the grown building.
Excellent. Any other questions or comments for Kaylee or Dr. Holman?
Kaylee, thank you very much. I mean, I think we, we just really feel like, again, this is just such a good way of getting a pulse on, on, you know, our stakeholders. I mean, we have some stakeholders that are obviously able to participate more, and we still have some work to do in terms of getting all stakeholders to participate. But I think that we just really feel good about this process. And again, it is very data that informs our work.
You know, and I just want to come back to point out one other thing that I think is really powerful about Thought Exchange. If you were to think about trying to get these comments face-to-face from people, I see some people in the audience and at the table here who have attended a lot of public meetings with me over the years. And, I mean, literally, we would have to have three times the number of public meetings that we've had, even come close to getting a third of the respondents that we get in Thought Exchange. So when you see that we had 934 people participate, our, our experience in doing face-to-face, which is of course a richer, you know, face-to-face is always a more richer environment, but this is about as close to that as you possibly can get and to get the engagement. Now, one of the things that we'll keep working on is how can we continue to try to get engagement from people in the community who do not have children? As you know, we use a variety of tools to send out the survey engagement process. As you know, we use a variety of tools to send out the survey engagement process through Rotary and through the Chamber of Commerce and through the HCI Lister, and we still only get about 1% of people, you know, engaging. And so we'll continue to look for ideas of how can we bring in the opinions of folks who don't have children in the district because they have such an important voice for us. So we need to keep working on it. I also know Kaylee will tell you that our percentage is not totally uncommon when we compare to other districts about that community and that number. But I still think, think of all the things that we've done over the years, and to see that we had 934 people engaged, we don't have a strategy at this point that even comes close to making this. So that's one of the things that I appreciate about it is that we really have an opportunity to get a lot of people involved.
Excellent. Okay. Thank you, Kaylee. Is there anything else you had or?
I was just going to say thank you so much for having me. It's always wonderful to see the conversations and the work that you're doing in one field. So if there are further questions, I'd easily be reached, so happy to support.
Yes, and we thank Kaylee, just, she's a maestro of this process. It involves quite a few moving targets and just on top of stuff and very professional. So we thank you for your support and your team's support.
Our pleasure. Thanks so much.
Excellent. Thank you, Kaylee.
Bye.
Bye.
Okay, we will move on to our next items for report, and that is Director of Finance, Val Mertstor, talking about debt service fund and, or excuse me, non-operating fund budget and internal service budgets as part of our budget process. Welcome, Val.
Thank you. Good evening. So I'm already presenting budgets again, which is a little hard to believe. So tonight, I'm going to present the non-operating funds, which is our debt service fund and our fiduciary fund, which is also our scholarship fund, and then our internal service fund as well. So I will start with our debt service. And just kind of a few basics about the debt service fund. We are required by state statute to levy 105% of our total bond payments. And so the vast majority of our debt service fund is made up of property tax revenue. We do have, you'll see on the next slide, a higher amount for state aid, and that is from the long-term facility maintenance aid. In addition to the aid that we get in the general fund, they also, part of that program was aid to help offset any, oh, what's the term I'm looking for? We had some HVAC bonds from like '04, '05, and part of that was to help offset that. So we have some additional state aid that's helping to just reduce our actual levy costs. And then we do have two bonds that are actually, they show up in our payments, but they are offset in our operating capital and our long-term facility. So it's not actually a taxpayer charge, but they do show up in both places. So it's, the expenses show up here, but the reduction in revenue is in our general fund. And then the expenditures are pretty straightforward. It is just our principal and interest payments, which are all scheduled out at the time that we issue the bonds, and then some kind of just miscellaneous service fees for processing payments and those sorts of things. So our revenue, you can see two years of actual, our current budget, and then what is proposed for 2018, '19. Again, you can see it's pretty stable. We have worked with others the last several bonds, and they are very intentional about making sure that our payment structure allows for a really consistent levy for taxpayers. So we're not seeing large swings up and down for our taxpayers. So we're anticipating about $5.7 million for the total revenue. And you can see the increase there for the state of Minnesota went from $73,000 up to, you know, 300, $400,000. So total expenditures, again, this fund is pretty straightforward. So our total bond principal payments will be 4.9 million. The total interest is about 813, and then about $6,000 annually for just the other service fees for a total of about $5.7 million. So again, very consistent from year to year. This is the summary, just showing our projected fund balance. Again, this is the normal range that I would consider for our debt service fund balance. Because we are required to levy 105%, there's this kind of excess that has the potential to build up. So you can see our fund balance is going to increase slightly. That gets taken care of if we get to a certain amount. The state actually just automatically does a debt excess calculation where they just reduce our levy. So that's what we are projecting for '18, '19, ending with about $1.2 million in our fund balance. This is our actual principal interest schedule for next year. And so the 4.9 million in principal and the 813 in interest are the numbers that I had on the previous slide. And these are the six bonds that we have, or five, actually, no, five bonds that we have outstanding currently. The bottom two, the one in 2014 and 2017, are both the operating capital and the LTFM bonds, so there's no actual charge for the taxpayers for those bonds. They were neutral. And then this is our total maturity schedule of the five bonds altogether have a total outstanding of $30.9 million. So if all else stayed the same, we would not have any debt after 2027. Do you want to do questions now, or do you want to wait till the end of this presentation? Do you want to do it by fund?
Yeah, we could ask them by fund. I think that's a good idea, Val. Questions on this, Val?
So this is more of a remind me, I meant to look up last year's narrative and I, the, on the debt service revenue in 2017, '18, the state of Minnesota, is that because of SubSec that we had the, the, look there?
The 521?
Yeah.
Nope, I actually think that, that I might have that a little high on my estimate. I think I grabbed a number on the levy cert that's a little high on that one.
Okay.
So when I went back and looked at it, it was 387. So I'm guessing this year I'll come in a little under budget.
Okay.
Good question.
Yeah, great, great question. Any other questions? Amy?
So the 105%, is that 5%? Oh, I turned my mic on. So the 105% that's collected, is that extra 5% collected to sort of offset people who may not pay their taxes that year? Or how do they come up with that?
Um, how they came up with it, I'm not sure. It has been in statute for a pretty significant amount of time, from what I understand. I do believe part of it is just to ensure that we do have enough to make sure we pay our bonds because that is, you know, directly related to our credit rating and all those sorts of things to make sure that we are financially sound to pay our bond requirements. Outside of that, I don't know why it was. I think it was just really to ensure that we had appropriate funds, especially if there's, because the levy certification process happens so early. So we will, in August, be basically levying for the next fiscal year, so for 19, '20. So it happens pretty early. So those districts that are in a situation where they are issuing debt maybe after their levy certification and didn't know they were doing it at that point, may have some payments that they hadn't anticipated and didn't get the revenue for. So I think it's mostly just kind of a buffer to make sure that all the districts can meet their requirements.
And do you know what happens if someone defaults on their property taxes? Do we still get the same payment from the county or?
Um, so there's, there's an abatement process that happens, and we do have, on our overall levy, we'll see that we get, it's a really, really small, small dollar amount that's considered abated. But there, I do believe there's a process at the state level where they give us additional state aid to help offset that, but it's very, very minimal.
Okay. Just curious. Thank you.
Yeah.
Okay, great questions. Any other questions on this? Okay. We can move forward with the fiduciary fund.
All right. So this is also known as our scholarship, more commonly known as our scholarship fund. So we have one active trust fund. We do track all of the scholarship funds individually, so we can always report back to the donors if they were to request that information to ensure that the money went to what they had intended. The guidance office here at the high school actually coordinates the getting all of the donations and reaching out and awarding the, that whole award process and facilitating that with the donors. We do have more than 80 scholarships from more than like 50 donors. So we have a pretty robust program, which is great for the students here. And we are the fiscal host for about half of those scholarships. So there are some of the donors that choose to send it directly to the college or directly to the student themselves. So what's reflected on here is just the ones that we are accountable for. And this fund also is very straightforward and very comparable from year to year. We've had a pretty consistent donor pool. So we are projecting about, again, $72,000 in gifts and donations, a little bit of interest revenue. And then our expenditures are typically projected as slightly higher because we do have, I think we'll have one now, one or two where we received a lump sum in advance, and we're just paying that down slightly over a set number of years based on, on what the request was. So I, I usually project that the fund balance will go down slightly based on spending those down. So we are projecting to end with about $157,000 in that fund. And again, that's been pretty consistent. We do have years where there are students that receive scholarships but, you know, changed their plans or didn't actually request the fund. So that's why it doesn't always line up with what we had anticipated, but for the most part, it's been pretty consistent. So this is the list of what we currently know and are expecting to receive for next Any questions on that one? That one's pretty straightforward.
Any questions? Okay.
Yep.
Move forward. Thank you.
Yep.
It's great to see all the people who give scholarships. It's wonderful. And tonight, with the academic awards night, some of the good things happening, so.
All right. So the internal service fund is where we account for our self-insured health and dental We have been self-insured in our dental program since fiscal year '06, and we went self-insured with our health in fiscal year '12, so September of 2011. This is probably one of my favorite budgets to present, just because it's been an overwhelming success story, and it's great to share that and talk about the things that we've been able to accomplish in a pretty short period of time with this. So just so you understand how it works, the revenue for this fund is the premiums that are paid by the district and the employees and the retirees. So payroll happens and we charge, the benefits advisory committee actually sets the premiums. We set up the rates and charge it in payroll and basically just move that money over to a separate fund to keep track of it. We also have retirees that are still on our insurance as part of their negotiated contracts. And then the expenditures actually are our actual claims that we're paying on behalf of the members that are enrolled. And then we also have an administration cost because we do have, as self-insured Blue Cross and Delta Dental are our current vendors, there is administration that goes along with having your own self-insured plan. And it is a standalone fund that is presented separately in the financial statements. So for dental, well, actually for both, we have seen increased participation basically every single year. In 2016, '17, we saw a pretty significant jump, and that was bringing on the Cannon Valley Special Ed staff for the one year that we hosted that contract. So in '17, '18, I've updated this, my presentation from last year, I was projecting '17, '18 to be a 6.4% decline, and it was only a 2.9%, which indicates we had some enrollment that I hadn't anticipated, which is great. So we are anticipating about a 3.1% increase. If you average it out, it's been about a 3% increase over, over the years. So about 595 total, total members on the plan. And that is actual employee count, not dependents and that sort of thing. And then the monthly premium, as you can see, has been flat for the last several years. And we've actually never increased the premium since 2005, when we started as self-insured. And we actually did a premium holiday in the '13, '14 school year where we basically cut the premium in half because we had so much fund balance to help offset that and reduce the cost for the employees for, for two years, basically. So that's, to have no increase in a premium for 12 years is pretty great, pretty great thing to be able to say. As far as numbers go, this is a very stable, very stable fund. We have, the benefits advisory committee has set a goal, a minimum fund balance goal of about $200,000. And that is mostly if we were to ever choose to not be self-insured, we would have to pay runout costs and that sort of thing for the claims that come in, and it covers a couple months of operating costs and the runout. I don't anticipate we'll switch, but that's why we have our fund balances to make sure we can cover all those things. So as you can see, we are over our fund balance projected. This grows just slightly, even with adding and expanding benefits, we still continue to, to grow the fund balance without raising the premiums. So we have excellent members who are responsible with their usage, which makes a big difference. So we are projecting about $570,000 for the total premiums, a little bit of interest, and then claims at about $527,000, and then the administration at 43. So again, growing that slightly to about $302,000, which is above our goal. On the health side, again, we have continued to see increased enrollment, the 10.3 again being because of the increase with SubSec. And last year, I projected a 7.2% decline, and it was only 2.1%, indicating that we had increased enrollment again. So again, 3% has been a pretty typical trend. Our benefit package has absolutely been a retention tool for us. We've had many staff come from other districts and from the private sector who have been very pleased with the benefit package that we've been able to provide. And the premium, as you can see, for '18, '19 is actually going down, which we're very excited about. We have actually had it flat for the last five years, and now we're actually lowering each level of the premium $100. So whether you were on single or family, the premium was going down $100. So whether you were on single or family, the premium was going down $100. And part of that, that's the total monthly premium, so part of that the district pays and part of it the employee pays. And when we negotiated with the Northfield Education Association last year, we negotiated a $50 per month decrease in both the single and family contribution for the district's contribution, which is a fantastic thing because it allowed some greater things to happen during the negotiation process and offer them a few different things that they were looking for. But it also resulted in some long-term district savings in what we're paying for health insurance on behalf of our employees. And then in the fall, the benefits advisory committee meets and they set the premiums and we actually recommended reducing the premium $100, which basically means the district is saving $50 a month per member and then the employees are also saving $50 a month. So it was absolutely a win-win for everyone involved. The district is not only saving in the general fund, but also the child nutrition fund and our community services fund, which is great for both of them as well. And so total, finance-wise, again, increasing the revenue is primarily based on the enrollment. We're actually decreasing the premium charge. So about $6.9 million is what we're anticipating for that, $45,000 or so for interest. Our insurance claims, we have had a pretty high year this year and most people that are self-insured will tell you it's a little bit cyclical. Every three years or so, you'll have a pretty high claim year, so we're hoping that will not continue, but we have plenty of fund balance in case it does. And we did, the $100 reduction, just so you know, is actually a pretty conservative reduction. We probably could have done more, but we wanted to make sure it was something that we could sustain for both the district and our employees and not have to come back a year or two later and be like, we have to increase it back up. So it was a pretty conservative. So as you can see, I'm not even projecting that we're spending down the fund balance with that lowered premium. So we still have a lot of, the goal, the fund balance goal is $2 million, so we are well past our fund balance goal, but obviously have the ability to do things moving forward and enhance the program. We did, as part of our last bid with Blue Cross Blue Shield, we decreased the number of days for the fitness reimbursement, so you don't have to go eight days instead of 12, things like that, just to give a little bit better benefit for our members. And that, it's over 1,000 members, I believe, actually, they call them belly buttons, so people that are actually covered on the plan, it's a little over 1,000. So we're projecting to end just shy of $7 million. And again, that's very dependent on how this year ends. We have had a pretty high claim year compared to what I probably budgeted for, but still have plenty of room to accommodate that. Any questions on that?
Excellent. Well, it's easy to see why this is such a great budget summary. So thank you. This has just always been such a great story and a really terrific win for our employees and the district. So board members' questions? I guess someone has a question. I did have one question. Do we renegotiate the contracts yearly or is it a multiple year with Blue Cross and Delta Dental?
We are required by HITA, which is the Health Insurance Transparency Act, to bid every two years.
Okay. So where are we in that? Did we just rebid that?
We just did it this past fall.
Okay, good.
Yep, and that has actually been a really good, there's not a whole lot of things that the legislature does that are great for us, but that has actually been very beneficial because it allows us to basically open the bids and then go back to Blue Cross or whichever vendor and say, you know, we have another bid that's this much lower and they basically come back with their final bid and we have saved a significant amount of money with that process.
So do you have a sense from just your work with other finance directors to know how many other districts are doing this type of program? Because you read often where, you know, double-digit increases in health insurance and dental and this is just such a huge win. Have you found that it's, you know, do you have a sense for how many districts are able to do something like this?
I believe there are about 30 districts or so statewide that are considered self-insured right now. I know there's several that are looking at it, but it's not a widespread. I will say it's been incredibly successful here because we have very responsible members. They're conscious of when they're going and utilizing the health plan. I've talked to other districts where their utilization is significantly greater than ours for a similar number of members. And Molly Beasley and the benefits advisory committee really laid the groundwork for setting this up for success. We went from four health plans down to two, you know, and limited the types of programs. There's other districts that have five different health insurance plans that, you know, and so some of those things that they strategically worked through, which were not, I imagine, easy things to work through, have made a really significant difference for us.
Excellent. Thank you for that context.
It is, the benefits advisory committee that we have is one of the highest functioning groups that we have in the district. You know, there's representation from each collectively bargained unit and we can't under, we really need to share that it's really been a group effort. Molly has led that thing from the beginning and she would be the first person to say, you know, that Ray Cootray and Jeff St. Martin back in the days when he was in the custodial crew and Sarah Bourne from the Office of Employees, there have been people, Carol Beamer, who's been there nearly from the beginning too, from the educational assistance. When you're in those meetings, there is a real look at what can we do to make sure we have the best benefits we can for our folks while making sure it's at the most reasonable cost. And the hard, the heavy lifting was done over a decade, this was prepared for, for a decade before we could do it. We, I mean, also, we can't undersell that. We have people who come in who cannot believe the quality of insurance that we have for the minimal cost. And for many people, when they just look at the salary that we offer versus maybe a different district, they don't see much of a difference and in some cases, we're outpaced. But when you look at the net, after you look at what they pay for the benefits, we clearly make up a lot of ground. And so it is a huge improvement tool and we're in about as good of a place as you possibly can be here all over, you know, various horror stories, whether it be in private industry or in public venues with the rise in health insurance costs. And, I mean, sometimes we look at each other and say, wow, this is pretty great. And it is, and it is really the team of Val and Molly and then the consultants with corporate health we had used over the years, who really also gave us some really good expert advice. And some of this was just the right decision at the right time. But to have $7 million in that fund balance, we're sleeping at night there. That's a good thing.
Yes.
Excellent. Okay. Thank you, Val.
Thank you.
So as you know, we will approve budgets, all budgets, so we're just in the process of hearing all of the individual budgets. So with that, we will move on to committee reports. We did not have any board member committee reports this evening. So again, as I had mentioned in the first part of the meeting, we'll now move on to the approval of the consent grouping. And as a reminder, there were a number of personnel items in the table file to be added to the consent grouping. Is there anything anyone would like to pull from the consent grouping? Is there a motion to approve the consent grouping?
Motion.
Moved by Jeff. Is there a second?
Second by Amy.
All those in favor of approving the consent grouping, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We'll now move on for items for individual action. We have two items this evening. The first being, is a resolution, actually, so it will be a roll call vote for termination and non-renewal probationary licensed staff, just an addition that we need to do. We did include the April 9th meeting, but there is one here. Is there a motion to adopt the resolution related to the termination and non-renewal of the teaching contract of the probationary licensed teacher as presented at the end of the 2017-18 school year? Moved by Ellen. Is there a second? Second by Jeff. Again, roll call vote. Anita?
Gerwitz?
Aye.
Strachan?
Aye.
Quinale?
Aye.
Iverson?
Aye.
Pritchard?
Aye.
Motion carries. Second item for individual action is around the additional licensed special education staff for 2018-19. Director of Special Services Cheryl Hall did the presentation last board meeting. So is there a motion to approve the addition of a 2.45 FTE for licensed special education staff for the 2018-19 school year? Moved by Noel. Is there a second? Second by Amy. So there's a motion. Is there any questions or comments regarding the proposed additional FTEs? Okay, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Those are the only two items for individual action, so we'll move on now to items for information. Dr. Hillman is going to provide a facilities action team update.
Yes, so last Monday evening, we met for our first facilities action team meeting and that was over at the Greenville Park Media Center. We'll hold our second meeting tomorrow night here in this media center. The third will be back on Monday, April 30th, back at the Greenville Park Media Center. So last Monday, we brought together about a little more than 30 stakeholders. We had about 35 people who were invited. There were several people who couldn't make the first meeting, whom we anticipate will be there tomorrow evening. Very, a very good cross-section of the community and basically we just gave a very brief initial presentation about the master facilities plan, the development of the master facilities plan. We reminded people what the master facilities plan called for at each site, again, very briefly, which people who know me are looking at me like, you can't do anything briefly, but I did do it in about 20 minutes. So we needed, in that teacher talk, we had to reactivate prior learning. And then what we did is we worked through three different questions. So people were differentiated at small tables, groups of three to five, and they were asked three questions. The first question that we asked them actually is the third item that is in the report that we gave to you, which were called, what were the deal breakers from the 2017 bond referendum? What we wanted to do is really go back and triangulate what we had heard from individual conversations. As many of you know, I had coffee with probably 12 or 15 people after the bond referendum, just getting their feedback about what they had heard and trying to get a sense of what were the things that really resonate with people either positively or not so positively as they went to the voting booth. So we started with the deal breakers, basically because that's what Thought Exchange always tells you to do, start with the one that could be more constructive to begin with in terms of constructively critical. So what you'll see in the spreadsheet that you have is, at each table, they had post-it notes and people were able to write something that they thought was a deal breaker on the post-it note. Then they brought it up to a larger poster-sized sheet of paper and we grouped or themed the different pieces. So what you'll see is, in some of the columns, you'll see several comments. Each of those spreadsheet cells represents one post-it note and you'll see how we grouped them. So this is an exact replica of what was done at the meeting and I've got the pictures to prove it for anybody who needs to see it. But what you'll see is, again, you know, things that are not shocking to people in terms of, when we think about the things that were deal breakers according to this particular group, really looking at tax needs, looking at things like about the high school project specifically, those were two of the largest issues, tax impact. The other piece that you'll notice is that, and I thought this was really instructive, another theme was the cost. And I think when we talk about money in the November bond election, I think a lot of times we have said cost and tax impact as one kind of theme, but it was very clear that these were two different things for the people who are at this session. And so I found that very instructive, saying, you know, it's not only about the cost, but it's also about the tax impact. So again, just showing you those top themes within the deal breakers there and some issues really around communication. And so that's a piece that I want us to continue to explore because we really struggle with that one. In fact, there were also some other comments about saying, you're talking about that we really did make a strong effort to be transparent and to communicate, but the deal breaker on the other side is that getting a wider segment of the voting population to be included in that communication. So the communication piece is something I'm going to be bringing back to you over the next couple of meetings. I think that communication from school districts has evolved significantly in the last three to five years and I think that we need to look at a more intentional way of about providing a compelling narrative to the community about all of the things that we're doing, you know, positive and maybe not, you know, challenges that we have. And so we're looking at different ways we can potentially do that. In our current strategy, you know, Erin Bailey does a lot of our communications work, I do quite a bit of our communications work, our principals do quite a bit of our communications work. It's something that's integrated in a number of different jobs. It's just one of the pieces is we're working with student achievement, think we are the worst at telling our own story, frankly. And so this was really a reinforcement for me, knowing of all the work that we did to try to communicate with folks, and of course, I know that you all know that and the various efforts that we did, we just haven't hit the right mix yet. And so I think we need to think more deeply as a school district about modern communication and thinking about, is there, are there some strategies that we could use or employ to be able to do a better job of sharing that compelling narrative on a regular basis in a variety of ways with the community? So I just want to share that with you. That's something that we are strongly reviewing about, how we can attack that, because we need our community members, whether we're going out for a referendum or not, to know and understand, you know, the things that we're doing well as a school district and also the areas that are of challenge. What we know in Northfield is when people are told about the areas of challenge, I think of Northfield Promise as the best example, when people are notified and they feel that they understand what a challenge is, they do rally to help us. So I think we just need to keep working on what are the best strategies we can do to weave that narrative. But that was a very interesting piece, you know, from the deal breaker portion. When you take a look at the portion, the second question we asked was, were there things that were misunderstood as part of the bond referendum this past fall? And again, we look at, the themes here were maybe not quite as pronounced as some of the ones in the deal breakers, but you still do see some substantial themes in terms of thinking about what was really needed as part of the high school project. And I think that that corresponds with what we saw in the deal breakers and a number of the questions that we got at our public meetings or the 51 different presentations, really people struggling with, what is the life cycle of the high school? You know, are we really at a point where we needed to do an entire new building? Were there other things that we could do? So I think that that's a piece that a number of people had said were misunderstood. Also, the misunderstanding, which, you know, Val said I could tell you that right up front, the misunderstanding about tax impact. And we really did have some good discussion about saying, so few people truly understand the tax impact of a bond issue and what are things that we can do to help clarify that for people if and when we were to do something in the future? And I think it's, and what's interesting is that the Minnesota Association of School Administrators last week just published a new video that they have about understanding the tax process from preliminary certification or levy until, you know, someone actually gets their tax statement. So we're not the only people who are struggling with that and I think it's going to even potentially get more complex as the state attempts to do the alignment with the changes in the federal tax law, the tax conformity piece. We also see some misunderstood piece about spaces and vocational spaces and open spaces and thinking about how those spaces might drive learning. So I think as you look at those pieces, those are the things that were misunderstood. Another piece that was relatively substantial was people saying that they, that we, people did not understand the cost of not doing something. You know, there's obviously the cost of doing something, but then trying to understand the cost of doing nothing. And I think we even see that in some of our updated estimates. You know, just an example of the high school project in, just in the last eight months has increased by about $7 million in the projection because of the substantial pressure on the steel industry and other raw materials. So I think there's some questions, you know, that was some of the, people brought up as the misunderstanding about, understand the cost of doing nothing. And then finally, the things that resonated with people, again, what's really, I think was really important in this exercise was to get folks to help us bubble to the top, the things that were true deal breakers. the things that were true deal breakers, areas where we could learn from in terms of things that were misunderstood. And then what are the things that people found, yes, that was compelling and it resonated with us, even though the bond didn't pass, these were the things that did resonate? And as you take a look at those, a list of things, the reuse of Greenville Park really resonated with folks. Early childhood really resonated with folks. The fact that the passage of the bomb, excuse me, the passage of the operating levy really helped reinforce for people as part of this team that the community values education, which I think is really important because even though the bond didn't pass, it does not mean that the community doesn't value education. And that was evidenced by the passage of the operating levy. So really some very interesting things about coming through, about resonating. And interesting, even though there were some things that were misunderstood about STEM and open spaces, there were also some things there that did resonate with a group of folks. So I think that we got some really good information from individuals, really thinking about early childhood, thinking about the new Greenville Park component. So we really think that we got some really positive feedback with any of the questions because the key thing is trying to help us, you as a board, understand, you know, the, for lack of a better term, the post-mortem last year. Now that, this past one was reflection. The meeting that we're going to have tomorrow night is about looking for. And so it's about making sure that we have an opportunity to say, let's take a look at these pieces. Let's go through some additional information about how we are prioritizing our academic needs, because of course, we did a survey after this last meeting. And there are some questions about, we're looking at facilities, but let's make sure we tie it, you know, to the academic portions of the strategic plan. So my plan is to give a little bit of context around, further, I did present the strategic plan at this last meeting, but I'm going to give a little bit more context around the academic portions and how a facilities discussion may help us accelerate those academic concepts that we're looking to improve within the district. So we'll do that tomorrow night and try to bubble to the top again within these things that resonated. Are there things that we learned that align with our strategic plan that people at this committee could potentially see that, yes, this might be a place to go? Are there things within the deal breaker area that we just have to finally say, put off to the side for a particular period of time? So that is the plan at this point. And then the third meeting on April 30th, the goal there will be to get the group to come to some kinds of consensus on a recommendation or a series of recommendations to you. And as we've said, the recommendations vary from, it could be do nothing and come back and look at the entire plan again, all the way to something very specific, saying, we should consider this part of the plan at this point, and it should go to the voters in this timeframe. So we want to get this, you know, cross-section of the community to give you some feedback. Of course, you are the folks that make that decision, but it's my job to make sure I give you the best information I can for your decision-making process. So I hope that that was a reasonably good overview. And I know that Noel and Amy were there, and Ellen was there as well. I don't know if you have any further comments on that?
I like, I like the fact that you brought together community members from all different persuasions and all different areas. And I thought it was a real mix of community and ideas. And I really valued the feedback that it brought for us, to us. So I just wanted to tell you that, that I thought you were very wise in looking for people that tamed the table with a variety of opinions because they do represent so many different people in our community. And we got to hear from them and learn from them. So thank you.
We were very thoughtful about, you know, the different, the folks from different parts of the community that we invited and wanting to make sure that it wasn't groupthink in terms of people who all thought in one way, but really asking for a diversity of viewpoints. And I think we have that, which is very good because that's going to give you a better product in the end.
Noel?
I talked with people who felt they were really valued when they were invited to come. They said, I have an opinion. I didn't realize my opinion was that valued. So being here, along with a lot of other people, was important to them. Thank you.
Excellent. And I just want to add too, I really appreciate the thought that is going, you know, how to make these meetings very productive so that people do come away valued and how you're framing the discussion and the involvement and the, you know, what you're asking people to provide. I think it's really, really excellent. So we'll look forward to tomorrow night's meeting and then for further updates as we continue to move forward. Yes, Noel?
One other comment that was made to me was that they feel like they have been listened to, and they will be anxious to come again and share their thoughts. And I think that's a real step in the right direction.
Excellent. Good work. Any other comments?
We'll keep you updated as the process unfolds.
Excellent. And again, board members are able to be at the meeting tomorrow night at 7:00 PM in the high school media center.
And just a reminder there too, that, you know, we have posted that as a meeting. But, you know, as board members come, because it's an advisory committee, you know, we can have more than, can have a quorum there if it was, but the key thing is board members need to stay, you know, out of the discussion and really observe. So that's just the key thing. And we just want to make sure the community knows that we're very serious about making sure that that open meeting law approach is followed to the T, so.
Great. Okay. So we can move on to future meetings, Monday, May 14. And then again, a special note, our second board meeting in May will be held on Tuesday, May 29th due to the Memorial Day holiday. So both those meetings in May at 7:00 PM in the high school media center. So with that, I ask for a motion to adjourn. Moved by Noel. Is there a second? Second by Amy. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We are adjourned. Good work, people. Coming to get home and see how the timber's ready.